Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Fledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you all for coming out tonight on what is an unusual rainy night here in the Hudson Valley. Tonight, for the folks at home, if you'd be kind enough to pan to the screen, we have a public hearing regarding a proposed increase in the water rates for the Water District One, and we have our Water Board Chairperson here, Hank Van Paris, to talk to us about what may be coming in 2026 as well. We'll take some public comments for up to 15 minutes, then we'll entertain that resolution. If you watched the meeting last time, we are amending our purchasing and procurement policy to include as well a green policy. And we were approached by the county, as were other municipalities, about a textile recycling program, which actually already exists here in the town of Red Hook, but we'll talk about joining the county's program as well. And a resolution to approve a couple of change orders to the St. Margaret's project, and we hope to have that project completed this fall. And then a couple of items on re-hore. It's the second meeting of the month, so we'll read our department and committee reports and entertain a little bit of correspondence. With that being said, I'll jump right into announcements. We did have from our state senator, Michelle Pinchy, announcement of a couple of events coming up this Saturday, is a senior golden gathering at the Arlington High School, and there is a skilled trades fair right here at Red Hook High, Thursday, October 23rd. We'll put this all out on our news alert and remind you again at our first October meeting, that's 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Red Hook High School. It's an event that's been taking place for a while and has been very successful. Just another quick reminder, this Saturday, weather permitting, a street painting festival in Tivoli starts at 10:00. Rain date would be Sunday, September 28th. There is a memorial for Tom Gilbert, who was very much involved in baseball and Little League here at the town of Red Hook, and Coach Gilbert passed away not that long ago, and there's a bench dedication for him, Sunday, October 19th, at 11:00 a.m., and that's at the Rec Park. For this next announcement, Julia, would you be kind enough to let people know what's happening?
Sure, this is the first of the public workshops for the comprehensive plan. There will be a number of different ways to get engaged, including three workshops. This is number one, focused on visioning. It's Tuesday, October 21st, at the Red Hook School Cafeteria. And registration in advance.
Terrific, very exciting that we're starting our community outreach. What do you want to see in your community for the next two or three decades? As we have had in the past, light up the Village Pink in October. It's breast cancer awareness month. You'll notice the pink light bulbs all around. Light the Village Pink Festival, October 8th, from 5:00 to 8:00, at the Fairgrounds. We have pink light bulbs if you'd like to showcase one. We received, you all have heard me talk about some wonky statistics we received just the other day from the Controller's Office, the 2024 fiscal risk, I did say that correctly, didn't I? Fiscal risk analysis for the town of Red Hook. For this year, or past year, we received a perfect score again, 0-0, both for fiscal and environmental. And if you're wondering what environmental stress means, it just means the general economic environment around, what's the demographics, our businesses coming into the community, is there growth, that type of thing. It's not environment, as you and I may normally understand it, but it was another perfect score. We're one of the few municipalities with that around. You hear me talk about how we don't accomplish much of what we have accomplished, and we've accomplished something like 86, 87 capital projects, at least during my time here as town supervisor, and it's because of so many people in this community who help with their projects, and Eagle Scouts have done a number of them throughout the years that I've been here. And this is Robert Pascal, who, in connection with assistance from Dad, basically did his entire baseball equipment storage shed at Rec Park. And he also raised part of the funding for it, and it just looks absolutely beautiful. You can see over here behind us, our baseball batting cage, and this is our multipurpose field over here, just to orient you, but what a wonderful job they did there, and we're very grateful for that work. Okay, it is 7:38, so why don't we do the notice for our public hearing at 7:35? Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the notice, please?
Notice of Public Hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on September 24th, 2025, at 7:35 p.m. local time, to hear all interested persons on proposed modification of the water rates and charges for Water District Number One. The Red Hook Water Board has recommended modification of the water rates and charges to increase the minimum rate from $54.60 to $57.33 for up to 9,000 gallons, and from $6.62 to $6.95 per 1,000 gallons over 9,000, as further set forth in the schedule on file with the town clerk. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook, dated September 9th, 2025, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I would like them to make a motion that we open the public hearing. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have with us our Water Board Chairman, Hank Van Paris, to talk to you about not just this annual 5% increase, and we've done a series of these over the last five or six years to try to get our water rates up a little bit, because we know we're going to have some capital improvement projects coming down the pipe in the years, but also to talk to you about maybe the next few years and what's anticipated. So Hank, did you want to maybe start off the public hearing, and then we can take some comments from the folks?
Sure. Cut me off after an hour.
No, I think we'll cut you off a lot sooner than that. But thanks for coming out in the bad weather.
Pardon my stumbling around here.
That's okay.
I'll sit over here. These chairs are heavy. Okay. As Robert said, I'm Hank Van Paris. I've been managing the Town Water District for 25 years now. I couldn't believe it, anyway. So we're going to talk about water rates. I would like to just set the perspective, we have enjoyed the lowest water rates of any place around since we started. For example, Robert mentioned the rates, we get currently 9,000, up to 9,000 gallons for a minimum charge of about $55, which we want to increase. The Village of Red Hook pays a minimum charge of almost $85 for 5.6,000 gallons. If you happen to live in the town where you're serviced by the Village, you will pay twice that amount. Willow Park, for example. Village of Ryanbeck seems to have a reasonably good rate, $72 per quarter, but I'm not sure whether it's a minimum or not, I really don't know. Village of Tivoli, however, pays a minimum charge of 118th, let's say 117 dollars for up to 10,000 gallons. Our administrative assistant, Doreen, who you talk to if you call the Water District, she lives in St. Petersburg, and she happened to mention her water bill, which is even worse. She pays $82 minimum, or for up to 9,000, I'm not sure which, but anyway, they also have, no, their minimum charge is $25 a month service charge. So you're going to pay a minimum charge of 75 plus your water usage. Let's just, you know, to set the stage a little bit, we have enjoyed, we still enjoy the lowest rates around, or probably the best water. So just to back up, give you a little history, which I like the history of this district. It started out back in the 1950s, the College Park development came into being with a water system, supply and water mains. A few years later, the Nakers came into being with a water supply and distribution. And, let's see, in the 70s, the College Park system started to fail. The Health Department prevailed upon Anandale, Philan and Aker supplier, to take over the College Park supply. So they put in a water main, I say "we," I wasn't involved yet, but a water main from Albee over to the south end of Cornell. So now they were a combined district. But Anandale did not have enough water, and they did not have good water. A group of people led by Ray Rhodes talked to the Public Service Commission, talked to the Town Board, and Anandale really wasn't interested in doing the water business, they weren't making much money, there was more headaches than anything. So they turned the district over to the town in the mid-'80s for, I would say, a pettence, a few thousand dollars, 20, 30,000, something like that. So first thing the town did was to engage some experts to find a new water source, and maybe that's not the first thing, they formed a water district, a special district, which a special district provides storage, water, maybe some other things, but anyway, it's financially separate from the town in terms of generating revenue and paying its expenses, although the town does back it up. So anyway, the water district was formed, they found a site for a new water supply, which is just across the creek from the Rec Park. They bought some land from Oakley-Cookingham, drilled three wells, two of them we've been using up to now, very good wells, very good water. And they moved the old, the pressure for those systems was, the water pressure was provided by a tank into which you pump water and air, a pneumatic tank. The air pressure pushed the water out into the district, provided your water pressure. So they moved that big tank from the site on Aspen Wall, it's right west to the pond between Albee and Aspen Wall. Moved that over there, and we had water pressure from the new wells. The next thing is, one of the next things, they did, that I mentioned, they established a water advisory board, and Ray Rhodes was the chair. I came on that board in maybe '87 or something like that. The next major investment we made was to build the storage tank on top of the hill out on Kelly Road. The initial plan was to build the $500,000, $500,000 gallon tank, but Bard College was in trouble, they didn't have enough water, they had no storage, so they came to us, came to the town, and made a deal, increase it to a million gallons, and we'll pay half. So they paid half of the cost of that original tank. That tank went online in 1989, and the next thing was to pay for it all, which we probably had been doing anyway, but we never did get to the stage of a form loan, we had something called bands, bond anticipation notes. We paid those off in the early 2000s, before 2005, something like 2003, '04, I'm not sure when, we paid those off, so we've been free and clear. Sacking the money away? Well, kind of, we did for a while. We have built up some pretty good reserves. We currently have about $800,000 in reserves, 500, let's say, 450 in reconstruction reserve, which was aimed for tank replacement or reconstruction, and 350 in a transmission reserve oriented toward water mains. So I mentioned our rates, we've been coasting along. It wasn't until just a few years ago, half a dozen years maybe, we instituted this 5% yearly increase, which we should have done from the beginning, and we probably should have had it bigger. You really should be planning for when your system ages, how to replace, how to repair, how to keep it going. So we have only been doing the 5% raise, but that's good for now, but next year, we're going to have to do more. The reason is, our water storage tank needs to be either replaced or reconditioned, cleaned up, painted, repainted. We had recommended a couple times to replace it, looking at about 40 years or so, it looked like the best option, but this year, we really started thinking about what's coming up in the next 15, 20 years, 25, whatever. Do we want to really be burdened with that? The cost for a new tank would have been about four mil, total, you know, with continued to it all. The cost to redo this tank is going to be 1.7 mil, I mean, that's our estimate, we don't have bids, proposals yet. So we chose the lesser expensive approach, and this tank is good to be rehabbed, who knows how many times, but probably several times. Okay, so we're looking at an expense next year of, let's say, 1.7 million dollars. In our reserves, I mentioned our reserves, I suggested that we take $400,000 out of the reconstruction reserve, keep some of it there, and put that toward the cost of the tank. Bard College is not interested in paying 50% this time, but they will contribute, and when we get a hard price, when we get responses to our requests for proposals and know what it's going to cost, then we can get a hard figure from Bard. That'll be sometime next year, early next year, I hope. So next year, we're going to face up to paying off a loan, a large loan, for redoing our tank. The Town Water District, our Town Board, met a few months, two, three months ago, and we recommended that we use a combination of water rate increase and add the loan tax, like we did the first time. I don't know how much we're going to have to borrow, I don't know, it's up to the Town Board to determine how we're going to repay it, but I just want to tell you, we're going to see a bigger increase next year, okay? And it's just one of those things, we've been coasting, water is not free, and the infrastructure is very expensive. Water mains, for example, we have six or so miles of transite water mains, which were came along with the district, and we have two or three miles of ductal iron. Now, you can't get a hard figure, and that's understandable, for how long they're going to last. The projections are up to 100 years. We've already got 70 on the College Park mains, and we got 60 on the Vennan Avenue mains. So we can anticipate in the next 15, 20 years, significant expense for either patching or maybe replacing certain parts of the mains. The number I have, dollar number, is pre-COVID, so it's old, but they were talking about a million dollars a mile for water mains, so, big deal. Our days of coasting are over, but I think we still will be better off than most water districts. Well, that's it for me. Question?
How often will you have to refurbish the inside of the old tank?
Again, we don't know. We've gotten 30 years out of this one, okay? It's a new tank, and we, not 30, about 26. It came on in '89, so we've gotten about 26 years now, and it's been inspected, and it's pretty good shape. Can we expect that good with refurbishing an older tank and repainting it? I don't know, nobody knows. So, but we're planning, we're hoping to get at least 15 years, and with a little luck, good paints, the way they hold up now, and doing a good job with good inspections during the painting, maybe, I would hope, 20 years.
So could you put a new tank up and sell your used one?
Sure. In fact, there are advantages to a new tank, because we could continue to use the old one until the new one is ready to go. With this current plan to refurbish the old tank, we will need a standby tank, ground level tank somewhere, to provide pressure while the old tank is being repainted, because it has to be empty, and it'll be empty for about a month. But the Village did that recently.
More public comments during the public hearing? Kenny?
Do you know what the Bard's usage as opposed to the residents?
Yeah, it's low now. In fact, they only use it occasionally now, when they have to shut down their system to do some maintenance. So it's relatively low. I don't know whether it's monthly or a couple months, doesn't matter. They, what's the numbers?
Well, like in the course of a year?
Oh, in the course of a year? No, I don't know that number either, because it's a set of, you know, incidental usages. If they put the whole, their total usage, I think, is about 200,000 gallons a day.
It's tiny, it's less than 10%.
Okay. BORT came to us, because they were in trouble
Yeah.
with the Public Service Commission and the Health Department, because their system was inadequate.
I agree.
Okay, you know that, and I know that. And they came, and it was only through the logist of the town, in agreeing to increase the size of the tank, that we solved their problem for a minimum amount of money.
Well, half a mil.
It would have been a lot more for Bard to solve its own problem.
I agree.
And I certainly think Bard should step up to 50% of any increase, because we're still solving their problem for them.
Okay.
And I, listen, you have done just a marvelous job, God, I didn't believe it when you stood up that you were still in this business, but thank God, brother, because you've done a marvelous job running this system. But, to be honest, Bard really should step up to the plate, because we solved their problem and continue to solve it.
And there's an agreement in place, but it may have expired kind of by now, 30 years or so, but anyway, there was no provision in that agreement for Bard to contribute to any maintenance of this tank. That's got to be fixed in a new agreement, which we're doing as we, you know, enter this new arrangement. But the current agreement does not require them to contribute anything for maintenance.
Well, then shut them off.
Well...
Listen, the main is right there, behind the tank, all you got to do is turn it off, and Bard will then understand what's going on. Now, you know, you got to play a little hardball with Bard. I'll give you another example. The only reason we have a ladder truck in the town of Red Hook is because of Bard. We have to have a ladder truck in our fire department because of Bard's buildings. We went to Bard, and they said, well, we respectfully declined to pay anything towards the ladder truck. Now, this is not right.
It isn't.
Now, I realize Bard is one of our, probably the largest employer in the town, but still, they should be willing to step up on this reconstruction, and I really, I really feel strongly about that, and you should talk to Leon about it.
Thank you, Albert. I just want to remind everybody, three minutes for public hearings, but also, if you'd be kind enough to say your name, because we need to have your name in public hearings for the record. Ken Minglarelli, Albert Trezza, Roxanne Fisher, and folks that should go. More with the public hearing on water rates. Right now, we're talking about the 5% increase, that's what the subject matter of the public hearing is. Anybody else like to contribute on that? On this?
Okay.
Sure? Going once, going twice? So Hank, you'll be back with us in the springtime, when we have a better sense of...
Let's say, I don't buy green bananas anymore. I'm going to be 95 next month. It's time for me, step aside, okay? And I've told the board that. I'm not sure when I will, but anyway, good to see you get out.
Good seeing you.
Thanks, thanks very much. Terrific job. Hearing, no other folks who want to speak up on this matter in the public hearing? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Bill, did you want to say anything?
No, the only thing I'll say is, as the liaison, I attend the Board, Water Board meetings, I attend all the monthly, you know, Water Department meetings on the basic operations, and I think everything that Hank said, we have to take very seriously. The bill's coming due, and we've been getting a really great rate on our water, and, you know, it's either paid in the past, for the past 25 years, a higher rate like some of our other neighboring municipalities, or we've gotten a real bargain on our water, and now we're going to have to, we're going to have to step up and pay. So I'm confident, the people on our Water Board, we have people who run Water Departments, work for the county, they feel strongly that the technology of the paints and the sealants that are used today are far superior than what they were before, and in the past, it was eight to 10 years, and now they're talking, you know, 15, maybe plus years. In addition, we have the tank inspected, like a scuba diver goes in, the big concern you have is corrosion of the steel and rusting. We have very little damage to the tank. So they feel, the Board, they're the experts, but they feel confident that we'll get a lot of life out of it for much less money than replacing the tank.
Good. Jacob Magin?
No. Yes, we were told we should expect at least 15 years as far as the borrowing is concerned, as it was mentioned. It's a 15-year PPU, so we would have 15 years to service that debt related to the rehab of the tank, and I thought that was an interesting question, and it'd be nice to know if there are, if there's a market for used water tanks and what that would go for.
Scrap.
Scrap.
That's what we did with the old pneumatic tank.
Yeah.
We got 100 bucks.
Yeah. And it doesn't sound so exciting now that I hear it. I'd like to sell it to another municipality, though, but yeah.
That's what Tivoli had to do with their tank.
Yeah. Okay, we need to keep moving, because we've got...
You have to move.
I'm going to finish the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we're back to public comments, folks, public comments. Lisa, if you'd be kind enough just to come up and say your name for the record, please.
Lisa Colero, Town of Red Hook. On September 9th, at the 28-minute, 10-second mark, Robert looked into that camera and said, "As far as the notion of starting an eminent domain, anything could be further from the truth." But the paper trail seems to refute that. On February 11th, this Board voted unanimously to pass local law... On February eleventh, this board voted unanimously to pass Local Law One. And on February twenty-first, the Red Hook Boat Club, through their attorney, filed the Article seventy-eight lawsuit challenging the new law. And as per their invoice, town attorneys Keenan Bean began reviewing and responding to the litigation on February twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Simultaneously, you contacted a law firm experienced in property acquisition in eminent domain. And on March twenty-sixth, following executive session, this board voted unanimously to have the supervisor sign a letter of engagement with the Hodgson Russ firm, which you did on March twenty-seventh. That letter, thanking you for selecting their firm, was dated March nineteenth, only eighteen business days after the filing of the Article seventy-eight. So where is the documented outreach to the officers of the boat club during those eighteen days? The letter reads, "The scope of our initial engagement will be assistance with the acquisition of property from the Red Hook Boat Club and a potential eminent domain action." They would not retain to represent the town in the Article seventy-eight because Keenan Bean was already doing that. Now, that letter did not land on your desk unsolicited, so clearly there were communications with Hodgson Russ prior to March nineteenth, within a month of passing Local Law One. And I have submitted more than one FOIL request for those communications, which are not privileged because you had not yet engaged, but I haven't received anything. You signed that letter on March twenty-seventh and immediately following, Hodgson Russ held conference calls with you and the boat club's attorneys on March twenty-eighth and thirty-first respectively, as per their invoice. Your March call, March twenty-eighth call, was invoiced as, "Call with town supervisor on acquisition plans for the boat club." And a court filing on April first states that during the March thirty-first conference call, the boat club's attorney was informed that in conjunction with the rezoning issue, the town also intends to acquire the boat club by eminent domain. And at the last meeting, you read us emails or messages from May, but clearly the eminent domain plan was put into action well before that. And we'd be very interested to hear the emails between February twenty-second and March nineteenth. There's a popular quote, "Never let the truth get in the way of a good story." And you spin quite a story. Equally frustrating is that none of the rest of you step in to correct or clarify. You all know what transpired and when, and you all know when this plan was put into motion. You didn't need to spend hours researching or filing FOIL requests to get to the truth. Your silence signifies complicity and betrays your obligations to those who were elected, to those you were elected to represent.
Thank you, Lisa. Would anybody else like to make some comment? And again, just as a reminder, three minutes, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Roxanne Fisher, Barrietown, New York. So I'm also outraged and disappointed by the falsehoods in your statement on September ninth. You entered into the public record after the speakers, which is unusual. And I'm here to request truth and also to correct one of my errors. You claim the boat club's refusal of a public-private partnership forced eminent domain by reading that May second attorney-client email blaming the club. Lisa has given the exact timeline for your proceedings. Please stop this myth. You've told me and others that acquisition was the only basis for a partnership. Even this week, you called, quote, "Acquisition speculative" in the Daily Catch. So Judge Rose's August fifteenth ruling, striking down Local Law One on many points, confirms your intent was always acquisition. Consider a true partnership without ownership. You stated that the town authorized an appeal of Judge Rose's ruling. As of September twenty-third, no public record shows an appeal filed within the thirty-day window. Just as you told the Daily Catch, authorization doesn't mean action. If no appeal was filed, please tell Red Hook's citizens your next steps. Are you resubmitting Local Law Number One? Are you commissioning independent environmental studies? And as a correction to my previous statement, the records on the town's website after the May sixteenth public meeting document nine-hundred sixteen unique names for letters, statements, petitions, and speakers, not just speakers, as I had mistaken. Eighty, eight-hundred forty-six, by the way, or ninety-three percent opposed eminent domain for the boat club property. Please, Supervisor McKean, it's your turn to clarify your statements. Reject myth and embrace honest dialogue now for a public partnership and private partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne. Roland, if you'd come a little closer to the microphone.
I'm coming.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
We can, and don't forget to say your name for the record, please.
Roland Page.
Thank you.
Prior administrations did not act when private riverfront property came in on the open market. There was no need for additional waterfront land. Your administration has not identified a true need for riverfront. Eminent domain without identified public need is likely to fail if justice per fails. As you failed with BARD, dealing with BARD College, I believe you will fail with the eminent, with the appellate division of New York State Courts. Providing access for eleven-thousand residents without a plan questions your capability and your capacity to function as a supervisor. I documented the deficiencies found in the environmental assessments and presented my findings to the town board and to the planning board. This sloppy work is typical of your leadership style. It's my way or the highway. No discussion, no correction of any deficiencies, it's very obvious. In my first review of the environmental assessment, I concluded the words to the effect, "Sloppy work makes good court exhibits." Mr. Supervisor, you are quoted in the Daily Catch. I am determined to do my very best for this community. I feel like, I feel my role is to help assist in bringing up consensus. Mr. Supervisor, you have not fostered an environment conducive to productive discussions. You've been my way or the highway, stuck on town ownership for the two-point-three-seven acres of boat club land due to your ego. An analogy of prisoner convicted to the death penalty brings being given a choice of injection or firing squad comes to mind.
Thank you, Roland.
Mr. Supervisor, you have failed again. The LWRP at V one-six, oh, one-five, Supervisor of the Town of Red Hook and the Town Board will be responsible for overall management and coordination of the LWRP. You can be objective, you... How can you be objectively, with a clerk conscience, serve as a, and partial official while the project under discussion is your baby?
Thank you, Roland.
Exercising good judgment before the project reached this point would result in an recusal by the town board and referring to the Secretary of State for determination of the correct manner to proceed to the, for an independent and objective review of the project pursuant to the LWRP.
Roland, I'm sorry, but your time is up now. Did you want to submit the rest in writing?
I can do that.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts.
I'm sure you don't appreciate it.
No, it's... I do appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts. Now, we have time for one or two more speakers, and then we're gonna go on with our agenda. Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question, Albert. Albert Trezza.
Okay, we're taking, we're taking comments, we're not doing a Q and A. I'm sorry. If you want to come up and just say your name.
Sure. I understand that there's some discussion about redoing the zoning law again, and I'd like to know if that's true.
Okay. I can't answer that question for you now.
Why not?
Albert, I can't answer that question for you now, okay? Because I don't have, I don't have the answer for you.
Yeah, well, we'll find out. Just keep us notified, Robert.
Yes. You can get all the notifications if you sign up on the website for notify me, something we instituted years ago here. Okay. No more public comments, let's move on to our agenda, please, if we would. I did want to say there were some, try to tackle a couple of these things, that remarks that were made. Public-private partnership, once again, will reiterate for the public. We were told by the boat club, who approached us with the director, that we would have a meeting. That never came to pass. We can only develop a public-private partnership if we actually meet to discuss that. We've had only one meeting. Once again, we're committed to try and make something work for everybody, the boat club, the general public. It is not the mission of this town board to get public access to the Hudson River. It is the mission of many town boards previous to us. It dates all the way back to the nineteen-sixties, the nineteen-nineties. All of those plans call for locating a public park in Barrietown along the Hudson River. We have, in our quest to try and get more informed about all the parcels along the riverfront, discovered many things, including that the Village of Tivoli will never have a public park because of environmental reasons, and they don't have the legal crossing over the tracks. And so, we are left with this as the only location, which was also conferred by a boat club director and other members, as feasible to have the public. As far as discussions about what that public-private partnership would look like, that can only happen if there are discussions. There are constant outreaches from the town to the boat club leadership to have meetings without conditions placed on anybody for those meetings so that we can discuss something and hopefully come to an agreement that works for everybody, which is the goal that we also share. Okay, we're gonna move right on to our first item in the agenda. And that is for water district rates. Any questions, board members, about that five percent increase that's proposed? Obviously, it's rather minor as it compares to the next year's discussion. Any questions, folks? Okay. So we do have resolution number?
Sixty-two.
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 Sixty-two. Sixty-two? Approving water rates and charges for water district number one. We did mention what the rate would go up to for a minimum. And by the way, we spoke about the comptroller's office. There's a report saying the average municipality spend by the comptroller's office, about eleven-hundred dollars, water user, eleven-hundred dollars a year. Sewer is something like six-hundred and something dollars. But there's also a tap fee. Did you want to say something quickly about that?
Tap and fee, yes. If you have property in the water district, which is currently not connected into the district, and you have to tap the water main to get your service, there is a tapping fee. And I forget just what it is now, a thousand dollars, two thousand something?
Thousand dollars. Service connection charges, a thousand. It's right behind you, Hank, if you don't turn around. I'll, I'll let her finish. Service restoration's a hundred, and unauthorized hydrant uses a hundred.
Those are low, those are low.
Yeah.
But we haven't had the situations come up, so we haven't been too concerned about it.
Okay. Moving right along, any further discussion on this topic? No, Jacob, you're on side. Resolution number sixty-two to approve water rates and charges for water district number one. Who wants to move that?
I will move that.
What did I? Okay, second, by anybody?
Second.
Thank you, Jacob. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Bill? Aye.
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the...
Thank you, Hank.
Thank you very much, Hank. Get home safely. Did you bottle some of this water on the way over on...
I followed it directly into the wells.
What about, what about our giant rain barrel? That really is what a water tank is at the end of the day.
Well, that, or the well, I'm not sure which.
Okay. I think we're, I think we're better off with the well.
I think we're all glad to get some rain.
Okay. Have a good night, thanks.
Good night.
All right, we've got the amended purchasing procurement policy. Jacob, thank you for incorporating that language into it. For folks at home, New York State has allowed us to deviate ever so slightly when we can purchase something that has environmental benefits up to a ten percent adder. And so, we've incorporated that into our policy, and obviously, we will use that or endeavor to use that provision carefully when it's justified, where the environmental benefits are significant. Any questions about the changes to update the amounts for quotes and formal bids? And there is that language from the law which was passed a couple of years ago. Anything? Julia? Obama? All good?
All good.
Julia?
Yeah, I recovered it pretty well last meeting.
Jacob, all right.
Appreciate it, the draft we got and the explanation.
Resolution sixty-three. Jacob, you want to move this?
Sure. I move resolution sixty-three, approving amended purchasing procurement policy.
Who would like to second?
Awesome. Thank you, Bill.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
And then we have the application to join the green purchasing community.
Right.
If you're green and Y, which we just needed a signature from you, Robert.
Or part of it, no.
And the total is four, total is five, it's ten, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, whatever that's where we can move forward with that.
Yeah, well, and then I will work on it tomorrow. Try and come up with that estimate.
That doesn't mean for the board action to sign it.
Okay. There's the application. All right, so, next item is county textile recycling program. Now, this is something I'm familiar with. My wife goes to these bins on the property on Red Farm, at Ozone. They have these, and for the folks at home, what this textile recycling program does, the company's called HelpSafe, and they will take clothing fabric that's not in good condition, and they will reuse, reuse those items as opposed to them ending up in a landfill. And the county, once again, sort of following Red Hook's lead, as you know, we've done food waste recycling, and the county started a food waste grant program there. Here, here we go again. Actually, this was a private situation led in this endeavor. And what the county is asking, whether or not we as a municipality want to join in and do either or both have a box or two at recycling or have a direct pickup from households where you make appointments, which I thought was kind of interesting. I'm not sure how financially that works out to be worthwhile, but it sounds great. Any, any thoughts on, on this? Julia, Jacob?
Can you explain, it seems like there is not a cost to the, like, how does it, how does the financial model work?
I think the model at HelpSafe ends up selling the material that it collects. So, as you see, they pay the, and I have it on the screen here, they pay participating municipalities forty dollars a ton for all saleable textiles collected. And... And from home pickup programs, and 140 collected from the bins. Obviously, that's a volume metric calculation there, not to exceed $1,500 annually. So they, on the resale or the reuse of the goods, collect, it's kind of a thrift store model, if you will, right?
Well, that's the question I have, is we have bins at the town recycling center for Salvation Army goodwill, I think?
We do.
Would those then go away?
No, we could keep those. And TJ says we have room for the HelpSafe ones or twos to go alongside that, and then people can choose where they wanna put their goods. The idea with the Salvation Army is that those goods should typically be in decent shape, because therefore, you know, being reused in their current form, the HelpSafe stuff is for textiles that are not necessarily in good shape.
I mean, it seems like a great addition to the recycling center, at least. I think it'd be good to consider that alongside everything else we've done to try to capture things and divert them from landfill. I think this is a great opportunity to do something. I know for me, like, if I'm getting rid of shoes or something like that, I'm always like, it feels wrong to throw it away, so I just like hang on to them. So having something that I know is gonna recover the materials would be really great. If it's pretty, if it can help divert things, I think that's something that I would love to join.
Yeah, anecdotally, I can tell you, my wife is constantly driving by and seeing that it's, that box is full of Red Farm, and so, and has to come back, you know, for when it's empty. So it's obviously a popular activity for people in our community. So are we interested in one or both of these?
I mean, I'm not sure I see the, I don't think there would be nearly as much use of the home pickup option. It feels like the kind of thing that Jacob described, that you would do along with, you know, your other waste disposal at the recycling center, but...
It doesn't seem like there's any harm opting in. If providing it as an option, maybe we find out that people really like it, or nobody's using it, but if they have it as an option, I think if it's no additional cost, maybe they can reason to not do it.
I agree, I think there's no harm, I mean, maybe if...
It may be something for like, moving or saving or something like that, yeah.
Well, also, folks who maybe aren't as mobile.
Exactly.
Right? We do this with our e-waste, or we did for many years, where if they called up in advance, we would drive to their house and pick up those very heavy TVs that they had. I would be in favor of opting in both. Bill?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is I would hope that the county has coordinated with Salvation Army, Goodwill, and the others, so that when things get put into those bins that don't meet their standards for reselling, that it's gonna go to this program rather than a landfill. And, you know, I mean, obviously, they would have the answer of whether they do that, but it might be good to check in with them.
So maybe some signage? Could we talk to TJ about signage at the recycling center?
Yeah, it's a little bit, they're clear, yeah.
Right.
I'd be curious whether the county has any, like, marketing materials to promote the program. Would it be good to be able to have something to send out to households or to post at the recycling center?
Yeah.
If they have it being made up, I mean, if they're doing it throughout the county, I'd imagine they have.
Well, they're starting.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so they don't have much to say.
They'll, they'll have it, they get it up.
When they get going.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion on this?
Yes. I do.
Sure, I would, I would motion to join this program, both for posting a container at the recycling center and to opt into the curbside textile collecting program as well.
Go second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Great, thank you very much. Okay. Moved in. Got a couple change orders for St. Margaret's, both that were anticipated. We spoke about many months ago on the doors, we needed to have, we need to pause on the, the door construction and the openers until we knew exactly what that equipment looked like. That's all set. The Stanley four-store operator. And then, when they were doing some of the drainage and doing the earthworks there for the parking lot, they made a recommendation that we place some topsoil to try to minimize the slope off of the back there, if you're familiar with the property, there's quite a drop-off there for maintenance and for safety reasons. Those are the two change orders. Any questions, there's detail there? There's a recommendation for the warranty. Okay. ADA accessibility, St. Margaret's change orders. Any further discussion? We have a resolution sixty-four, am I on sixty-four at the end?
Yes.
Okay. Authorizing change order for St. Margaret's accessibility improvements. Contracted amount, two change orders, one for $9,650, one for $9,500. And I assume move. Is there a second?
Second.
Whoa.
Sorry.
Jacob in a hurry. Further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to reorg. A couple things we will do tonight, a couple we'll just reference. Oh, by the way, here are the budget adjustments. Can I also get a motion to approve these budget adjustments, please? For, one was a request by Highway Super to transfer $12,000 from Sand, she feels very well stocked up for this year, to Patch. Just got more patching to do. There's that, and also, these two change order budget adjustments, gonna be simultaneously. I have a motion for those, please, to approve them. Oh, this is Highway.
Sure.
I guess Bill's looking to you.
If, if Julia wants to.
Julia wants to move it?
I wish I don't mind.
I'd be happy to second.
Okay. All in favor of these budget adjustments, thank you very much. Okay. We have a recommendation for the planning board chair. We have an applicant. We have Loma, the one vacancy on the planning board. Nancy Lowell Hogan. She's got a very extensive background, having been on the planning board representing the bar association in another county, working through universities, in, in the county legislature. Planning board, town board. And recommended by, since I'm on our chair, now we only have, where is our list? There's a list, let's go to the chair. I think the one we have is for the period ending 2030, if I'm not mistaken, yeah. These are seven-year appointments. So that's the spot we have right now. Any questions?
No, I thought just into a poll fight.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Nancy Lowell Hogan to the planning board for a seven-year term, filling the vacancy ending in 2030. An I assume move, is there a second?
There's a second, yeah.
Thank you, Bill. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, we did have an expression of interest for the energy committee, and I think the chair and the applicant, Robinson Breck, will be talking, and we'll get back to that one at our next meeting. Did we finish? I think we had a third one.
There's this one.
Oh, right, our Panda representative. It's not one of our committees. Panda, Panda, also has a board and has a municipal representative. And the Red Hook representative has been for the last decade, Marion Harvey, and she's sent a very nice note, grateful for the time she's spent both with Panda and liaising with the town of Red Hook. But she wishes to retire from that position, and there is a recommendation to appoint Carol Klein, who has a lot of professional production experience and is a fairly recent Red Hook resident. We have a lot of folks on this community who have worked professionally in television in this type of capacity, film as well. Looks like a good fit. And while we're talking about Panda, Danielle Maloney, who's been the executive director for many years, looks like is moving on, or literally moving out of the area. And she's been with Panda for a very long time, and we wanna wish her well and thank her for all of her good work over the years. And nothing but the best. So it looks like they have a replacement, Suzanne Fagel, who is also a fairly recent, although not that recent, resident of Red Hook, who also has professional production experience, who will be taking over those roles. So welcome Suzanne. All right, I think that's all we have for reorg. Why don't we do some, excuse my scrolling, some committee and department reports? The assessor has been preparing for upcoming SCAR hearings for 2025. They've received 72 applications. We had a 9% trend, and for the folks at home, what we've been doing over the last several years is what the state requires from us in order to maintain 100% equalization. Everybody's property, depending upon what type of property, residential, commercial, has a trending percentage in order to keep it, if you will, even Steven. And so, the last trend we had was 9%. What we are seeing in this region, perhaps different than in other places in the country, is that it seems to be prices continue to creep, creep up. Affordability continues to be a challenge. You heard us talk about accessibility in terms of folks with physical challenges. But really, what, you know, I hope you'll be hearing more from us in the upcoming couple months is accessibility based upon income. We talk about that we live in a community that if you want to access the waterfront, if you wanna access the Red Hook pool, if you want to play soccer with the Red Hook Soccer Club, you need to be a member, to have some means in order to do that. With escalating prices, and certainly, the increase in mortgage rates that we've seen over the last several years, this community is moving very far away from many folks to be able to move here or have their children stay and buy a home here. So we'll see what the trending is for next year. We talked about, the assessor talks about some of the petitions and Article Sevens, and working on next year's equalization rate and resales. The most recent list of sales from Duchess County was for August 2025. There was a Red Hook five sales, the highest coming at $800,000 for a multi-use building. And in the town, there were 11 arms-length sales. The highest was $1.4 million for a new single-family home. For the folks at home administratively, if you feel like this keeps changing, you are not mistaken, New York State Tax and Finance has changed how you file for enhanced STAR. The assessor's office can no longer accept any applications from the homeowner. They must contact the state directly, it does make sense. They're the ones who have your income data, the number to call, and we'll put this up on the website as well, is here for you all to see. And there's a threshold, in order to qualify for enhanced STAR, you must have an income below $51,400. And then you can continue to apply for the assessor's office, or if you will. And that is from Cheryl Kuzlak, our assessor. Our next report is Bill.
The assessor.
Yeah, I'm aware, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Building and zoning?
As the liaison, so I guess I'll have to do it. They've been busy, but not as busy as some of the earlier summer months, but they issued 50 permits, they conducted 95 inspections, they issued 26 year certificates of occupancy or accommodation. They did receive three complaints, and they generated $9,089 in revenue, spending fees. And I wanna thank Steve Cole, who's not left, but we've been down a person in the building department, and they really picked up the slack during that absence.
And Jackie.
And Jackie.
And Jackie, Senator. And we're happy to have Brandon back. And this is for a portion of the month. Just to preview for next year, you know, we should see a slowdown in that department. Based upon tradition, is looking to wrap up their building. They're only a few foundations away from completing and then sign-offs, perhaps, in the summertime.
And Bard College, which was building dorms and another performance space, you know, that work is getting done, so.
Very good, and here's a breakdown, a chart of some of the types of activities that the assessor's doing. All right, Julia?
Yes, so the comprehensive planning committee, yeah, this is a communication that went out on the notify me system to anybody in this world for updates about the comprehensive plan. If you would like to stay abreast of what's going on with the plan, feel free to enroll yourself, and we'd be glad to keep in touch with you. So the comprehensive plan steering committee has been meeting since May, monthly, on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Our consultants are Hudson Valley Pattern for Progress and Pace Land Use Law Center. And after being out in the public at Apple Blossom, doing some initial engagement, we went a little bit behind the scenes through the summer so that the steering committee could really get up to speed on the comprehensive planning process, local demographic, socioeconomic trends, and sort of the existing documents that are guiding the town, as well as market growth planning principles. So this baseline information was important for everybody to be on the same page about as we went into the planning process. And then, we also have been working on developing a community engagement plan. The committee, I would say unanimously, is very committed to a comprehensive and inclusive public engagement process. And so that has begun. We were at Apple Blossom Day last weekend, talked to a lot of folks. Uh, we were at Apple Blossom Day last weekend, talked to a lot of folks, which was great, it was a beautiful day. Uh, and as I mentioned earlier, our first public workshop will be on Tuesday, October twenty-first, uh, seven to nine PM at the Red Hook High School in the cafeteria. It will be interactive, small group conversation around long-term vision for the town. Uh, registration is not required, but is strongly encouraged. It will help us have a, a sense of how many people will be in the room and communicate with people in advance. Um, children are welcome, uh, there's no specific childcare provided, but it is a child-friendly event, and there will be Spanish language interpretation. We also, uh, have another engagement tool called Kitchen Table Conversations, which are really just a way to have sort of a more informal conversation in your community with your neighbors. Uh, members of the steering committee have been sort of oriented to how to lead one of those, um, as well as some other volunteers for the process. I think you may be interested in hosting one in your community. Uh, you can reach out to me or another member of the steering committee, and we can help you get set up to do that.
Thank you, Julia. There's a real my way or the highway with the Highway Department. What, uh, what do we have for this month's Highway Department?
Um, so there's a number of updates to projects and a few other things that Teresa shared in the report for this month. Um, the first was the Saw Hill Bridge replacement, um, happening, um, on Aspen Wall Road. The water department's been working on a shut-off on Aspen Wall, Aspen Wall Road to facilitate the project, um, the point of contact with the project is changing as well. Expecting to go out of bid by this fall. In Forest Park, the Highway Department's completed, uh, the initial work in the shade and drainage project. Multiple catch basins, several lengths of drainage pipe have been installed. Minimal disturbance to the boarding homers of properties, which is good. Um, road cuts been filled with asphalt binder, and then we're gonna let it settle over the winter and then do the final top course of asphalt in, in next year's paving season, so that project should be complete next year. Aspen Wall Trail crosswalk and signs, trail community's directed sign, traffic control plan for Aspen Wall Road. Teresa recommended the plan be reviewed by engineers for safety and reviews of signs and markings, which feels good idea. For the Brian Grant, Highway Department met with the vendor to discuss the equipment necessary. Um, preliminary estimates for the mixing, storage, and application process. We're gonna need to store this, um, in a shed, at least to start, if we have an alternative. And then, um, we're gonna wait for guidance from Randy for next steps. A colorous own sons resurfaced Jefferson Adams and Woods Rhodes with asphalt. The Highway Department crew provided traffic control for the project, so things are ready for that. The next one is a purchasing note, so previously Teresa proposed purchasing a combination body truck for tree, tree work, chip, chip truck. Um, and then for a few other things, um, she's suggesting a change here, um, to look for a dedicated chip truck for this year's purchase. And the cost will be lower because of that, because it's not gonna have the multiple bodies, so, um, she's suggesting purchasing a chip truck at a lower price, and then also purchasing an additional vehicle, electric van, within the same budget. She's gonna provide a quote and specifications as soon as we receive them from the vendor. Um, expected to be a New York State OGS contract purchase. And then, she notes that we're gonna need to replace a pile truck next year, and she's gonna propose a combination body truck be that instead of this year's purchase. So, um, she's linked to the other proposed truck in the letter. That truck would have the Brian tank, it's only interchangeable parts, so we wouldn't be able to do that until later. And then, she's a note about electric vehicle incentives, so, um, looking at electric options for the utility van and pickup truck purchases. Um, and she notes that the effectiveness and efficiency of heavy-duty electric vehicles for use in emergency response situations is being evaluated. So she says that she's gonna be pricing traditional fuel vehicles for heavy equipment and noting that there will be, um, fuel efficiency, reduced emissions, enhanced, enhanced safety features for replacing fifteen-year-old engines of newer models. So I don't know if we're gonna wanna have the conversation about what that looks like, but I appreciate your sharing the thought process behind that here.
So that's the program that Truck Department, I sent you the information, it's Truck Roucher Incentive Program?
Yeah.
And, you know, typically they, they had you scrapping a vehicle, a dirty vehicle, if you will, or, or the clean one. You know, let's take a look at that when they come in, and see what you can do. I'm inclined to, to go with the electric if we have an option, you know, I think these.
Yeah, you love to evaluate what, what exists now as opposed to what might be coming out over in a few years in terms of what's, what actually works. And then she noted that the Highway Staff Department completed AED CPR refresher course on, uh, September ninth. So, that's every two years, so I appreciate them getting that training done. So thanks to Teresa and the crew for everything they do.
Yeah, and especially for the Forest Park project, that was a retrofit that, you know, uh, those folks were desperate to, to get some relief from drainage. It's, uh, sad to say, it's probably not the only retrofit we'll have to do.
It's a good start.
It's a good start, exactly. Okay, uh, so many thanks to the Highway Department. As we Italians say, polizia. Bill?
All right, uh, August was a busy month. And the package, they only gave us the even pages. I'm hoping, hoping that what can put up was, had them all. The original draft did, but, um, they responded to one hundred and forty-one calls, uh, here, and then another sixteen to Tidley, 'cause they, Tidley does their, uh, is their contract. Okay, good, so the package has all the, all the pages. They issued, uh, sixteen, uh, traffic summonses, violations, new parking tickets, and two arrests. Each of the categories is self-explanatory, um, and, uh, goes through the various types of calls that they go on, um, to include a great community service welfare checks, there it is. It's always at the end. And I say this at every meeting, uh, where I do this, the welfare check is if you have a loved one that you can't reach, you call the police. Even if you live in another state, they'll contact our police and they'll go and see if the person is okay. And they've saved a few lives of people who were found unconscious and probably weren't gonna survive had they not broken in and, and saved their lives. So, it's an important public service that people, um, don't really recognize, like that's what nine-one-one is for. And, uh, I utilized it once for another state. All police departments in the United States perform this service, uh, it's part of what they do. And I'm proud of our police department for, uh, for the work that they do.
Christina's not here to do, uh, the WRECK Commission Report. I can leave what you summarize. They're caught up on WRECK Park West and WRECK Park East, well, that's a quick summary. The recreation park field scheduling, uh, they talk about, um, the various teams and leagues. Flag football is now being done on the west side of, uh, London Avenue. And, um, they've roped it off and they've put up flags as well. Uh, talking about some maintenance issues with the tractor, um, they've got a good handle now on the trail's fence line over at Cooking Ham. The pickleball club starts in September. And, um, we are going to remove the nets in the wintertime, but the winter is, it's getting more and more delayed each year, it seems. We'll see how this winter turns out. Um, we did put some more bean clay down, um, on, uh, one of the fields, the softball field in the west, um, just had some grooming. And we're looking at some alternates, uh, with the purchase of playground safety fiber. Tom Gilbert Memorial Bench, I've already mentioned. The men's basketball league at WRECK Park Court, um, has concluded. And, um, this is now the thirty-fifth year that Kevin Malathas, um, run that league. It's a real, uh, tribute to his volunteerism, and we thank him for all of that. Um, we spoke about, uh, the Eagle Scout Project, and that's referenced here in that report. Reminder to folks, we do have a public Wi-Fi in WRECK Park East once in a while. It needs a little attention, and, uh, but for the most part, it's been quite reliable. The folks playing pickleball would like to see if there's a way to can provide them some shade during the summertime, and so, um, they're looking at that as well. Groundskeepers. And they did some work along the Saw Hill. You know, we have that, uh, trail that goes behind Apple Ring. And so, um, they, uh, pulled some trees and limbs out of the stream itself. And we got another grant, uh, for next year, the gators, maintenance stuff. I think that's pretty much it. There's a softball tournament, uh, coming up in October, the seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, the Tom Gilbert Memorial Tournament, with rain dates for the next weekend. And there'll be no, uh, softball field for open play for applicants. And that's all for recreation for now. Tree, a little speed for the trees.
I'll read the report.
Okay.
Um, so Kathy actually included, she typically starts the meetings with a quote about trees, and the one for this month was, he that plants trees loves others beside himself. Um, so I kinda like that she included that in the report. Um, a few notes of discussion from the meeting. Um, fourteen trees have been ordered for the fall planting. Planting sites to include Pitcher Lane, Bud's Corner Road, WRECK Park West, Aspen Wall Road, and Wales Death Road, so a number of locations for those trees. Um, the tree inventory project continues to move forward. The next scheduled field trip will be September twenty-seventh, so this weekend, I think. An updated and expanded planting proposal for WRECK Park West has been approved, including the removal of one dead tree and the planting of several more. And then a note that the Ginkgo trees are planted at Mill Road School several years, years ago, sustained some damage, most likely from strain trimmers and mowers. So the committee has reached out to the school, is gonna put new protective wraps and cedar mulch around the trees in an attempt to prevent further damage, and hopefully the trees will recover. That's it for them.
Thank you very much, Jacob. We talked a lot about water, Bill, but do you wanna give us a couple of highlights from the monthly report?
Sure, um, I think I mentioned last month, uh, well, number two has been filtering wonderfully, but well, number one, apparently is not producing as much water as it normally does. And they believe it's a, probably a piece of equipment or two, not necessarily the well itself, uh, but it's gonna be rehabbed. Um, one of the things that Hank talked about was the reserves. Uh, part of their reserves is for sort of issues related to this. And so there are some, like a well, a new well pump or a rehab. And these things cost, although, five figures, um, to do, and they get done, you know, they were last rehabbed three years ago, I think, both the wells. And there are reasons, uh, that, uh, from sediment and other things that get stuck inside the well, considering amount of water that they pump, so, um, we're working on that. But the water itself, the testing, if you go to the next page, I mean, our, our water is fabulous. Never had any problems whatsoever. And, uh, the rest of it is issues like supplies, like filters and things that, and then maintenance things that have to be done. So for example, the number six on the other, what, the water had to be turned off, uh, over a manner for a short period of time when they were having to repair a, dig up a valve and replace it. But, um, you know, many, as Hank said, some of these systems are old, and, um, they're going to be, having to be repaired, so that's what's in store.
Well, you wanna delve right into the ZBA report?
There was just one, uh, ZBA applicant from the last meeting. There was no meeting in September, uh, it'll be, next one's in October, and it was Robert Burke, who's in Barrytown, or right on, on, uh, the corner of River Road, and, uh, and Barrytown Road has put in, put in an application to raise the roof, I think, and increase the size of the barn, so that's before the ZBA.
And I, as far as, is that the last, I think that's the last committee or department report, and then we had, uh, just some correspondence on a boil, boil water notice for not, uh, the town or the district, but for a privately-owned system at Mountain View Global Estates. We were sent correspondence, they all have been sent.
Is there a date for that boil water notice, or is it still ongoing? 'Cause this was from September seventh.
I know, I, I, I don't, I don't know if it's over or not. Typically, they notify the homeowners, uh, and then let us know, so we didn't receive this until a week after, uh, the boil notice was issued. So I don't know, but that's a good question to follow on that. Okay, folks, um, that concludes what we have for tonight's agenda. I wanna thank you all for coming out and, uh, wish you safe travels back home during the rain. And, uh, we'll see you back here. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is October fourteenth. We will have some additional meetings in October because it's budget season, and so, um, you'll get a sense of what that budget's like, uh, at the beginning of the month. So we may have some meetings in between, and of course, you'll find out if you sign up for notifications. And I wanna thank you all again for coming tonight. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into attorney-client session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all again for coming. Aye.